Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll call the November 3rd, 2025 meeting to order. We will start with an invocation, and that indication will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Barrow will introduce Pastor Dave, who is going to help us with the invocation, and then I'll follow that with an introduction of a young man helping us with the pledge. If everyone would please rise.
Tonight, we have Pastor David Bun with us here. He's coming from Trinity Wesleyan Church in Eaton. We appreciate you being here with us tonight, Pastor.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts for the gift of community, for the gift of Rockingham County, its people, and the place we call home. Thank you for every family that lives here, works here, and worships here. We ask your blessings over the homes represented in this county and in our cities. May these be places of peace, faith, and hope. Though we lift up our local businesses, the men and women who work hard each and every day to provide jobs and opportunity and growth, we ask that you bless their efforts and give them strength and favor. We pray for our schools, our teachers, and our students, that every classroom would be a place of safety, learning, encouragement for the next generation. We pray over our churches and the pastors who lead them. We ask that you would continue to be, that we would continue to be a light in the community that we stand for, standing strong in truth and grace and serving and loving like Jesus. And Father, tonight, we also lift up our county commissioners and the leaders. We ask that you grant them godly wisdom and discernment as they make decisions that affect the lives of so many. Let their every choice be guided by integrity, humility, and the desire to serve others above self. We thank you for our first responders, the men and women who serve us and protect us daily. Cover them with your hands of protection, strengthen their families, and remind them how deeply they are appreciated. And Lord, we don't want to just pray for today. We pray for the future of Rockingham County. We pray that these seeds planted now would bear fruit for generations to come. We ask for more jobs, safer neighborhoods, stronger schools, and a deeper sense of unity among all who call this county home. That your presence, God, is, your peace dwell among us, and your purpose lead us forward, not just today or tomorrow, but for the years to come. And we will ask all these things in the powerful name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, and everyone would say, amen. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by a young man who is seven years old. His name is Dakota McCrickert. He is in the first grade at Leaksville Spray Elementary School, and he is being accompanied by his big sister, Ms. Brooklyn McCrickert, and she is 12 years old and attends Holmes Middle School. So if everyone will please face the flag and give the appropriate salute to Mr. Dakota McCrickert.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, united states, where liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to Pastor Dave and to Dakota and Brooklyn for assisting us with that tonight. And then next, we have a recognition. We have 15 young ladies who devoted a lot of time to helping beautify Rockingham County and volunteering in Rockingham County, and I'm going to hand it over to Lance for this portion of it.
Mr. Chair, it is an honor and privilege to be able to recognize these group of young ladies who have done a lot of work. I've learned more about this program in the past couple of weeks than I had ever known about. It's a very successful program. It's called Leadership and Service Ambassador Program of Rockingham County. The director is Romalita Harrison, sitting in the front row in the blue dress. Tonight, we're honoring 15 high school students who have participated in the Leadership and Service Ambassador Program of Rockingham County. This program began as a way to cultivate servant leadership in high school students. The director stated, "The program was designed to provide intentional programming to facilitate and advance opportunities for young women to learn about dialogue and engage and work to empower and create space for their intellect, spiritual, and emotional intelligence to flourish." Ambassadors are taught, "Leadership is not a title, it's a behavior." Each ambassador has completed 100 hours of service for their community. Some of their projects included, delivered 1,800 bottles of water to elderly residents during the peak of summer heat, organized and hosted a teen wellness conference to address critical issues concerning youth mental health and well-being, assembled and distributed 1,000 hygiene kits for young women in Rockingham County, crafted handmade blessing blankets for children in foster care to remind them they are not alone and the community cares for them, and let a book drive donating hundreds of books to children to support literacy and learning. We congratulate this group who have shown a commitment to leadership and service to our community through their participation in the Leadership and Service Ambassador Program of Rockingham County. Mr. Chair?
Ladies, I believe Mr. Metzler is going to call out your names, if you would. We'd like to get a picture with you, so if y'all would come up as he calls out your name and...
Harold Bowman?
As we go head down?
Maddy Morrison?
Billy Nordstrom?
In the grave, Sam?
Would you please, would you?
Yes.
I'll take pictures.
And is there anything you would like to say? Okay. Please do any further, how would you like us to fly this?
Girls, can I get y'all six and six kind of in front and back? Two rows of six. Y'all just want to slide tall as girls in the back of the whole floor. We've got to slide all the way down this way a little bit, but the commissioners down around this.
You know, I've done this before.
If you give me your phone, I'll take the two.
All right, one, two, and three. One more, one, two, three. All right, let's make sure we got everybody good here.
Stay there.
It's a big group. All right, I'm good.
All right, I'm good.
Thank you, guys.
Another camera, y'all.
Another camera?
Congratulations.
Gentlemen, you've had this agenda for roughly a week. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Richardson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye. Next is the consent agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, if you have any questions about items on the consent agenda, please reach out to the county manager or his staff. They'll be glad to provide information about items on the consent agenda. With that, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Barrow.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kellum. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Next is public comment. We do have rules related to public comment. We do have people that signed up to speak. Lance, would you please read the rules?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The public comment period shall be for the purpose of allowing members of the public to present any matter pertaining to county business or items on the Board of Commissioners' agenda. Remarks shall be addressed directly to the Board of Commissioners and not to the staff, the audience, or media. The chairperson shall and will open the public comment period. Any speaker who wishes to speak shall approach the podium and not speak from his or her seat. For each speaker, shall clearly state his or her name and physical address when he or she approaches the podium. Any citizen shall be allotted three minutes. Citizens will be allowed to yield their time on a specific topic by utilizing one more attendee's time. This would allow no more than six minutes. The total amount of time allotted for the public comment period is 30 minutes. Your time would be displayed on the monitor in front of you. The time clock will start with three minutes and less yielded time to six minutes. You will hear a beep at one minute to alert you to wrap up your comments. If you are to yield your time or time is yielded to you, then please let the chair know in advance. Speakers will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, or use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person of which, when directed at a public official, is not related to his or her official duties. The Board of Commissioners may accept written comments in lieu of oral statements. Written statements can be delivered to the county manager's office.
Mr. Chair? Thank you. First is Jim Fink.
Before my time starts, Mr. Akins is going to yield me three minutes, if that's okay?
Good with that?
Okay. And also I have a question. When does, before I start, when does the time, when does the sign up end? Is that right before?
It's ended at this point.
I understand that, but when does it officially end?
Six thirty.
Before the meeting starts?
Eighteen thirty.
Okay, so just as an informational point, Mr. Isley tried to sign up about a minute before he took the paper up and was told no. All right, thank you, gentlemen. My name is Jim Fink. I live at 405 Wedgewood Court. A little concerned...
Clarification, Mr. Chair, it was six thirty for the sign up?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Jim Fink, 405 Wedgewood Court, became concerned a couple of weeks ago when the sheriff stood up here and talked about his role, and there was some pushback from this board about what they thought his role was and what they thought their role was, so I was a little concerned. So since I had a couple of people asking me the question, I don't, I didn't know the answer, so I actually reached out. So I did some research online. I actually called the North Carolina School of Law as well, and I've got some things that I want to share with the public and with you gentlemen. First of all, I want to go over the basic rules or the basic responsibilities of the sheriff. He is the, and I'm just going to give him in bullet statements. Number one is his law enforcement duties, so that's his specific number one job. That would involve patrol and investigate crimes, respond to emergencies, enforce state laws and county ordinances, conduct criminal investigations, and then coordinate with other agencies. Number two, jail and corrections management. Operate and oversee the county jail, supervises inmates, transport prisoners, maintains inmate records. Number three, court and civil process duties. The public will see those folks when you go to court for any number of reasons, but most specifically, if you get a speeding ticket, you'll see the bailiffs and all the court guys there for that, but they also serve legal documents, provide courtroom security, execute court orders, collect and handle evidence and property. And then number four, administrative and leadership responsibilities, which includes management of the sheriff's office staff and develop budgets, create policies and procedures within their agency, maintain community relations. Number five, community and public safety roles. They lead crime prevention programs in conjunction with the SROs that they control, participate in emergency management, work with schools and civic groups to promote public safety education like their programs. And then, of course, the sheriff is also an elected official. He is selected by the county voters. Usually, it's a four-year term. They set the priorities according to their wishes within their department. That's the basic job functions of the sheriff. The county commissioners, number one is policy and budget authority, adopt the county budgets, set property tax rates, thank you for that, by the way, approve capital projects, adopt ordinances and resolutions. Number two, oversight of county departments and services, and that would include every department within this building. They, representation and leadership, they're supposed, you guys are supposed to represent us, which means stuff that's important to all of us should be important to use your priority. It's not self-serving, it is serving us. You all need to look at that one a little closer, in my opinion. Number four, regulatory and administrative functions. Number five, meetings and governance, which we're doing right now. In short, the county commissioners act as local legislators, budget managers, and county representatives. They shape how the government operates within our county and how services reach the residents. If you notice, I didn't say anything about the sheriff's department's duties that pertain to the government other than the budget. I also didn't reference anything that the county commissioners oversee other than the budget. You all have no control over the jail outside of the budgeting process, and put yourself in the middle of some of these things saying that you're going to clean up messes? That's outside your jurisdiction. You don't, you can't clean up messes as a, as a commissioner. You can't control budget, that's it. Nowhere, nowhere listed is in either one of these is politics. We've injected politics in this board way too often as of late, and it seems like we're running political cover for someone, and guess who that might be?
I'm going to stop you there.
No, you're not.
Well...
Because I'm not making anything that says anything about you. I made a generalized description.
You have to address the board as far as items before the board or items pertaining to board action.
When you involve yourself in politics that involves running cover for somebody, then you just did that yourself. I didn't do that, you did. So basically, it rolls down to one thing, and I think somebody said this on social media somewhere, is that you need to know your role. So some of you are really good at knowing your role, some of you aren't. So I would just challenge you all that, you know, look into your duties and let's stay within those guidelines. Let's, let's not try to get bigger than we are. Let's try to stay in your lane, and let's try to represent the people for a change. Thank you for your time.
All right, Don Powell.
I'm good.
So that's everyone for public comment. Next, we have a presentation on the mark, and Mr. Dave French.
Good evening, Chairman Berger and commissioners. My name is David French. With me is Sean Rogers. It's my pleasure to serve as the president of the Board of the Rockingham County Historical Society and Archives. Our organization does business by the name of the Museum and Archives of Rockingham County with the acronym MARC, M-A-R-C, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Over the past several years, the MARC board, staff, and volunteers have worked collaboratively with Rockingham County to make tremendous improvements to the historic courthouse with the museum facility reopening to the public on October 4th. Now that the MARC museum is open, we have had an incredibly busy month. Now that the MARC museum is open, we have had an incredibly busy month with the opening reception, the chamber ribbon cutting ceremony, and a fantastic Theater Guild performance. We can now share with the community our accomplishments and provide tours of the new MARC museum exhibits and improvements to the taverns. The major renovations to the building began in 2024 and, as with most projects, took longer and were more costly than were initially forecast. Replacement of the heating and air conditioning was accomplished at a cost of 1.1 million, with the installation of new equipment throughout three floors of the building. Once this work began, we recognized the urgent need to upgrade electrical panels and fire alarm systems. We are very fortunate to have the funds to renovate the lobby and the main museum, and I want to express my thanks to the county manager Lance Metzler, county attorney Clyde Albright, the leaders and staff of Rockham County Sheriff's Department, or Rockham County Engineering and Public Utilities Department, Rockham County Fire Marshal's Office for their great help with these projects. These improvements were made possible through a capital campaign that's ongoing. To date, we've raised $2 million. These projects have been made possible through a grant from the state of North Carolina through the leadership and support of Phil Berger and Reese Pertle, in addition to our initial matching grant from the National Endowment of the Humanities and from Rockingham County. We are also fortunate to have received substantial contributions from Reevesville Area Foundation, Home Trust Bank, multiple municipalities, MARC board members, philanthropic organizations, and many community members. We have much more work to do to improve and preserve our historic courthouse. The lease agreement with Rockingham County has been an ideal arrangement that has enabled us to secure these grants and invest in our facilities. So I especially want to thank you, our Rockingham County Board of Commissioners, for supporting the long-term success of the MARC. Tonight is a great opportunity to introduce and recognize the leadership of the MARC. Our new executive director, Sean Rogers, joined our team in October and comes to us with extensive experience as a previous executive director at Mendon Hall Home Place in Jamestown, North Carolina. I also want to recognize Cameron Stewart, our operations and programs manager, and CJ Idol, who served as the MARC executive director and will continue to serve as associate executive director. So next, I'd like to turn the program over to Sean, presentation over to Sean Rogers, to share with you more detail about our events and what we have planned. Four? Okay.
Chairman Berger and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself and share with you my excitement about the Museum and Archives of Rockingham County. My name is Sean Rogers, and I am pleased to be the new executive director at the MARC. I would like to ask at this time Cameron Stewart and CJ Idol to stand up and be recognized for their outstanding work at the MARC. I come to Rockingham County with an academic background and employment experience in interpreting, heritage interpretation, historic preservation, and appropriate tourism, and I plan to bring those skills and experience to bear to do everything I can to help interpret, explore, and share the history of Rockingham County. But not only that, I'm going to strive to help the communities throughout Rockingham County to do those very things themselves. Really excited about the upcoming opportunities that will present themselves in the near future. I actually had, I'm from a little town in Indiana called Terre Haute, and I've lived in North Carolina for a little over 20 years, but my roots run deep here. And in fact, they run deep here in Rockingham County. I descend from Dodds, Fields, Allen's, Purcell's, and others. And people like Bob Carter, the late, great historian of Rockingham County, had an influence on me when I was just 16 years old. And living in Terre Haute, Indiana, he actually helped me research many of the lines that I just mentioned, and it is a great honor to me personally to play a hand in curating his papers, his collections. And not only that, I also understand and bear the weight and responsibility of doing that for the entire museum and the community. Looking forward to it. Speaking of resources, the MARC is a tremendous resource to the community with the historic courthouse, Wright Tavern, and the two properties that are revolutionary war sites. The MARC staff, board, and volunteers have made me feel very comfortable and show a very strong enthusiasm and ability for continuing to carry on the mission of the Museum and Archives of Rockingham County. Really looking forward to working with everyone, including volunteers and other stakeholders. There we go. The MARC will continue to strive to have a significant positive impact on Rockingham County. One of my primary goals is to build on the high level of community collaboration that exists at the MARC. We have highly active board members and volunteers from throughout the county. We maintain a great partnership and host joint events with the William Bethel Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Our association with the Dan River Basin Association strengthens our trail building and outdoor activities at the historic properties. The MARC's participation with the Charlie Pool Festival demonstrates the importance of our musical heritage. MARC is also well positioned to support future growth in tourism and economic success. I am very pleased with the great turnout at recent community events, such as the chambers ribbon cutting, the Theater Guild performances, and the holiday market. It is so rewarding to see crowds of people at these MARC events. These programs give us positive momentum to launch our membership drive, continue our capital campaign, and implement our 2026 program planning and sponsorship goals. The MARC is such a great resource to bring together people from throughout the county to learn and share. With the support of Cameron Stewart and CJ Idol, the MARC intends to expand our partnerships and programming with public and private schools, colleges, summer camps, as well as theater, music, and art organizations. I look forward to our future events, including Christmas at Wright Tavern and our numerous programs and MARC American, the MARC American 250 North Carolina Exhibits and High Rock Trail, including General Nathaniel Green tours. In closing, I want to express my sincere appreciation to Rockingham County and all the organizations, communities, and people that support the MARC, and we will all continue to work to make the center of Rockingham County at the center of Rockingham County the best that it can be. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations on your new position, and thank you for coming.
Sure having you.
During the week, or do you have certain hours if the citizens who are listening to this wanted to come? How would they know, or what hours would you have for them to come visit the museum?
Thank you so much. Please feel free to take a look at our social media platforms, in particular Facebook, Instagram, and also our website. In addition, our hours for tours are, excuse me, Wednesday through Saturday, 10 to 4, and Tuesday by appointment.
Okay. And on your social media platform, like Facebook, is it Rockingham County MARC, or what would we look for if we were looking for it?
Museum and Archives of Rockingham County MARC, M-A-R-C.
Thank you.
Welcome, thanks for having us.
Yes, sir.
If, I do want to mention one thing. Not sure if it'll be the MARC or the courthouse. So, my brother, Justice Berger, has in his possession at the Supreme Court Susie Sharp's chair, and has made arrangements for that chair to be loaned to Rockingham County for some period of time, and I don't know how long. So there's been discussion with the clerk of court, and of course, he's trying to figure out how to get this antique and keep people off of it. So we may be in touch to either make those arrangements or perhaps try to make some connection with the MARC to get some of that coordinated. I know we've got maintenance in touch with folks as far as going to pick it up, but, and I don't know what the timeframe, I mean, there's been communication, so that should be in the county for some period of time in the very near future.
Thank you, it's great.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, I'm going to hand it over to Lance, and he had something that he wanted to address.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I've got Chris Elliott here, too, to support me, but lately, there have been things that have been said that are misleading, inaccurate, and not true. I want to clear the air for the public. Fingers are being pointed at staff for things that didn't take place. I wanted to clarify those so that the general public is aware. We value every penny that is spent and that we're doing what we are statutorily supposed to be doing. We take our jobs very seriously, and we also take how we use your money very seriously. I would ask that Chris Elliott come up here to provide an update on our insurance premium and some general information regarding the status of our insurance to make sure the public knows what is correct.
Mr. Manager, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Commissioners, just to kind of cover some things about the insurance and things that I've heard somewhat tonight. Our goal as the county, even though we control the purse of the sheriff's office, we're required by general statute to hold their, number one, take care of their facilities, and then we have to insure them. And not only do we insure them, we pay them, we run administrative cares through HR as far as their benefits and everything like that, but as far as the insurance is concerned, when we have zero oversight of how that department is ran, we have the 100%, we're the bearer of the burden when things don't go right and our premiums are raised and our deductibles are raised. Right now, we sit with one of the, I would say, top five highest deductibles in the history of North Carolina. And in daily talks that I have with our insurance companies, they don't want to come within 10 feet of us right now until this administration is done. That's a hard burden to bear. Why didn't they, why didn't they just run away from Rockingham County altogether? Well, it's because on our end of things, we've been doing our job. Not only did they keep insurance with our employment liability and our umbrella coverage and our commercial lines of coverage, but we reduced our premiums in those coverages because we've done our job. Me being here in a non-political position, it makes it extremely hard for me to have to hear the lies that I haven't done my job, and especially it gets concerning when you have individuals that are running for your seats, who could be my boss, and if that's what they believe, then a vote of three could do away with my position. So I'm up here not just standing for what is the truth, and I have the truth here, and it is public record and it's in every email that I've got. We communicated with the sheriff's office. We told them that we were having issues with communication, and we were not being told. The insurance company told us that there are situations that they made us aware of that we were not told. We were not specifically told. The insurance company in this investigation found out through news articles and even a deposition in a lawsuit that somebody had against the sheriff and his, in his office, in the interrogatories, in the asking, in the investigation portion, we found out that an inmate had had sex with one of our jailers, and that jailer was terminated. We didn't have any clue about that. And to hear that from the insurance company, that they had to find that out not coming from us, but through their own investigation by talking to the sheriff's own employees who gave that information up, was a, it was a gut punch. And then to continue to hear that, that there was nothing that was slight or maybe not up to par on the other end is just blatant lies. I'm not saying that I'm the perfect risk manager, by no means, but I've done my job, and I've got emails to prove it. And now I feel like I'm having to protect my job from blatant lies that's being told by somebody that I've always respected. So I'm free to have any questions that y'all would have, but to stand up here and to be absolutely lied that the county administration did not do their job, I take offense to that. I really do.
Gentlemen, do y'all have questions for Lance or Chris about these instances or the comments that were made?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hall.
Yeah, I've made a couple of comments back in August and was criticized on social media, and basically was said that these things didn't happen, that I was spreading false information, even though I have and I've provided some of that written evidence to some folks here that are here tonight. You mentioned the person, the jailer who was fired for having sex with inmates. The other one, I think, that came up was about the sexual harassment, and that suit has since become public. That's the other one that came up in deposition, is that right?
That is correct, and now out of that, there's another lawsuit against the sheriff and the county administration that we, is in the legal, is in the county attorney's office as we speak right now.
And that came to you in an email on May 13th of 2024?
They're all right here. There was four or five different instances that the county never knew about, and the insurance company, through their investigation, sent it. I sent it to the sheriff on 6/5/2024, and I just concluded that this week, Travelers Insurance put the county on notice to deny our law enforcement liability coverage and our employment liability coverages. They sent, stopped the employment liability coverages, and they covered everything through the county once they did their investigation. And I sent that it was the carrier's expectation that any incident that may give rise to a claim must be reported.
So, Mr. Elliott, so tonight, we appreciate Mr. Fink here reminding us that we are in charge of the budget. So do these issues affect our budget?
Absolutely, it's affected our budget. I mean, when I tell you, I mean, just, you can go Google, you can check, who in the state of North, who in the United States of America and a public entity has a $200,000 deductible? We're self-insured right now. It's me and it's Clyde Albright, and we're doing everything. If they pull somebody over, if we have a sexual harassment claim, if they, if they do a high-speed chase that we shouldn't be doing, or we do a pit maneuver that we shouldn't be doing, or we do something as far as embezzlement, guess who covers that? Up to $200,000, it's me and it's Clyde. We are self-insured up to $200,000. I've never seen that in my career.
Mr. Elliott, also, there's been talk tonight about policies, which we heard that, you know, the sheriff sets policies. Have those been, any of those been addressed with the insurance company during this, the last few years regarding some of these instances and some of the problems that have gone on?
Yes, the policies have been, we have, we have got the criteria from the insurance companies of things that we should be doing and what they wanted to see. When this whole process started, there was When this whole process started, there was a lot of letters, like the one right here from the sheriff, that says that he would update all of the policies, all of the procedures to what the insurance company wanted him to do.
Has that been done?
Huh?
Has that been done?
I will tell you this, as of, as of two months ago, our insurance company was wrapping up their audit to see if those things had been done. And when they inspected all of the insurance policies, they requested, I want current policies from the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office gave us over 87 policies. Most of them are over 10 years old, some were still in 1998. I think some of the newest ones that I saw were 2020 and 2021. That's still four and five years old. But none of them have been updated since this happened with the insurance. So that, again, you've got the insurance company asking, well, why have we been told that these things have been updated? And it's not on paper, because that's what they're going to look at if we're taking to court. What is the paper policy? So I've recently gotten that back from them, and that's why they're tired of the talk. They're wanting to see action. And unfortunately, the gentleman is correct. I can't make the sheriff do anything. We can, we can give him the recommendations that the insurance policy has been given for the last two years, but until they see something that's changed, they're not going to want to touch us with a 10-foot pole.
I'm done, Mr. Chair, I think. Any other questions? Well, Chris, I appreciate everything that you and the rest of administration does. Yes, I mean, it's, I've given talks to folks, and sometimes we have instances where we're stuck with a bill, and folks get offended when, you know, we point things out. But what we need is transparency, and that's something we haven't had. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Honorable Commissioners.
We do, I believe that's everything that's on the written agenda. We do have one item of new business, I believe Commissioner Richardson has.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Those of you that look at the calendar at all are probably aware that the 11th of November is coming up soon. That's the 11th month, and it was the 11th day, and in the 11th hour that the armistice was signed, ending World War I. That has since become Veterans Day in the United States of America. And so I would like to propose to the Board of Commissioners here to make the week that includes 9 through 15 November Veterans Appreciation Week here in Rockingham County. And as some of you know, there are activities going on. I personally am going to one this Thursday at Monroeton Elementary, 7:45 start, but I'm sure they'd welcome your presence, and I think one of my colleagues. So, Mr. Chair, I make this motion as, in the form of a resolution for Veterans Appreciation Week.
Okay, gentlemen, we have a motion by Commissioner Richardson, a second by Commissioner Barrow. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye. Any other items of new business, Mr. Manager? Okay, we'll move to Commissioner's comments. Commissioner Kellum.
I'd like to thank the leadership and service ambassadors that came tonight. What a great show of young ladies, their leadership ability, and what the future may hold for them. So that was highly impressive. Also, to remind people that we still have some great football left in this county. Get out and enjoy, support your local teams, and like to thank all the people who showed up tonight. And definitely, if you're in the county or you're coming through, visit the Mark Museum. It's a great place, got a lot of great exhibits, and I think you'll find it worth a stop. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Halt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we appreciate the young ladies. They give us faith for our future and hope, so that was very nice to have them represent tonight. Thank you, folks from the Mark. That's great news. I know you had a big challenge, and it looks like you've been successful, so we're very tickled to see that and to have you guys here and being successful. Yeah, and of course, the other item that we talked about tonight, of course, is the budget, insurance, getting these costs updated. Folks need to know what's going on. Sometimes there's talk of transparency, but then folks get mad when given the opportunity to be transparent. So, you know, we're just trying to put the information out there. If you have questions, reach out to county, and we'll try to respond to those things timely. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. I, too, am impressed with the ambassadors, and my congratulations and appreciation for all that they're doing here within the county. There are some other attaboys. I'm old enough that I remember working in that old courthouse, and I enjoyed coming. I believe it was the 3rd of October that we had the ribbon cutting, and it's quite impressive now. Those of us that saw the old courthouse appreciate what's been done over there and the dedication of primarily volunteers to make this stuff happen. Lots of grand volunteers here in this county. Congratulations to you. I hope you can keep that up. I'd also like to recognize the various food distribution services within the county. I can't name them all. We've got a laundry list of like 20 or maybe two dozen, but we obviously don't have any control over the federal government, the SNAP program, and various other nutrition programs, but these are essential. There are people that need them just to maintain their health. And I would like to commend and recognize all of those within the county that are helping ameliorate the problems caused by political la-dee-dah in Washington, for lack of a better word. So we certainly appreciate that. And as usual, I'd like to recognize a worker within the county that does remarkable work. And tonight, I'd like to honor Carrie Taylor Pennix, who works in our Economic Development Program. She's been with it since its start. She has done various, various other things. She's also a graduate of Rockingham County Community College, so our dollars at work produce and enable employee. She now serves as a deputy director over at Economic Development. She has a huge institutional knowledge. She's a key partner for working with the industry, and a lot of times, things are going on, and I can tell you this without the detail, there are things going on as we speak due to the efforts by the Economic Development Division that we have here, and Carrie has been significant in all those efforts. And if you ever want a program put on correctly, she knows how to do it from catering to getting the invitations out, you name it. She's also responsible for numerous grants. I don't know if she helped the Mark with that particular one, but several of the grants that have allowed this county to open more walk-in paths and so forth have been through the efforts of Carrie. She's a hometown gal that has done great work in the service. So Carrie, I'd like to recognize you and tell all the other folks that we owe you a vote of thanks, and we certainly appreciate this, yet another outstanding worker serving Rockingham County. And with that, Mr. Chair, I yield.
Thank you. Commissioner Barrow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to recognize our elected officials that we had with us tonight. We had Ms. Paula Rickstraw here with us from the school board, so thank you for being here. A couple of events I'd like to bring to everybody's attention. This coming Friday, November the 7th, we have an unveiling of the walkway at Veterans Park, followed by, on Sunday, the 9th, we will be having a Veterans Day ceremony to recognize our veterans at 2 o'clock at our Veterans Park. Something I've been harping on for several months, but we haven't made a lot of progress. Coming up on November the 13th at Osborne Baptist Church, we will be having a foster care information session at 6:00 p.m. We are in desperate need. We have over 170 children that are in foster care right now here in the county, and we do not have enough foster families. So if you are willing, or if you know anyone else that's willing, that you go to church with or are in some sort of community service with, if they would be interested in coming, please send them to Osborne Baptist Church on the 13th at 6:00 p.m. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Yes, the young ladies that were here that we were able to recognize tonight, certainly thank them for what they do in our community. Not surprising, they all couldn't make it, and that's because some of them are very busy doing other things. But certainly, congratulations to all 15 of those young ladies. And, you know, government, especially local government, can only function with transparency. And when people try to distort information or even put out, you know, portions of videos as opposed to the entire video, they're hiding something. And, you know, that's unacceptable. The job of this board at times is to ask questions. And I can assure you, when we see how much money somebody is costing us, we will continue to ask questions. Our next meeting is November the 17th at 6:30 here in the Commissioner's chambers. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Halt, second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, let it be known by the sound of aye.